Burke here, I see him on the list, but I don't see him.
He is.
Okay. All right, Laura, do you want to read the?
Absolutely. This this open meeting of the Men and Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 24th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate, participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access access is afforded. So that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public, public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Men and Select Board is convening by telephone conference as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. That's all you, Ms. Mark.
Okay, thank you. So just a reminder, if you are not participating, if you could please mute yourself. And another reminder is we will be taking all votes by roll call as this is a remote participation meeting. Okay, Chairman's comments and reserving those for our next meeting or potentially later. Statements and petitions, are there any? Look like it. Responded to the board. Senator Louis Burton Azzi Foundation Letter of Recognition. The Office of Senator Burton Azzi Foundation recognized 19 towns that have been represented by the senator in the past. This year because of the extremely close finish among five top total towns. The foundation sent letters of recognition congratulating selectmen and town clerks of Optin, Milford, Bellingham, Mendon. And this typically is an award that is a financial incentive. So I believe it's a thousand dollars, but that went to this town of Grafton. And it recognizes exemplary voter turnout. So we commend the voters of Mendon for turning out to vote. And especially during these really important times, it was good to see such a high turnout. So congratulations to the voters of Mendon. Next, we have Mendon Brush Association sent a letter requesting store items in the former museum building. I believe Bruce is on.
Yes, sir.
All right, Bruce, you want to discuss with us?
As you know, the Mendon Brothers Brush have been started back in 1967. And we've been meeting over at the Roger Wood American Legion post since then, I believe. And we used to use that place to for a meeting and we used to use that place for storing our supplies. For our porkettas and the Christmas parade and some of the other stuff that we do in town. But back, as you know, back a couple of years ago, the Legion started a major remodeling project and left the brothers kind of high and dry. So that we didn't have any place to store our material, our supplies and stuff like that. So the brothers have been thinking of renting a storage unit, purchasing a container or trailer, or even build a shed, but we don't have a place to put such a building or a container or trailer. So it was brought to our attention that the museum would possibly be available. This would give us a place to store our Christmas supplies, which we usually use up there in Fountains Park anyways. And also store our plates and silverware and culinary, cutlery stuff that we use for the porketta. So it's just a couple of questions as to whether we could or couldn't use the building. And then if we could, what would be the expense? Naturally, the brothers would take over the expense of the electricity and the heat, if there's heat in there and stuff like that.
Okay, Kim, have you, do you have thoughts on this? Have you been able to look into this at all?
Um, my thoughts are we would just have to discuss, you know, how we would handle the utility costs related to it. And make sure probably that we put some sort of formal written agreement in place, which I'm sure Cindy could write up for us. No problem. So then we know what the terms are, but doesn't seem like a problem to me.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see there being an issue, but would agree that you should have a written agreement just to lay out the terms. Cindy, do you want to chime in?
Yeah, this is not uncommon in most cities and towns when they have space that people want to use. They'll just draw up a license agreement, formidable at your will and setting forth whatever you decide on for the terms and that should do it.
You know, we're just curious as to what the costs are. I mean, there's nobody or nothing really, sort of speaking of now, I don't believe. Dan would probably know better. But I don't know what the expenses are as far as electricity. Naturally, this would have to go in front of the association just before we did anything else. But I just kind of have to bring an idea of a number to them to find out what if they were willing to do this or not.
Lonnie or Chris, do you have any, any comments?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
So why don't we on our end work on coming up with some sort of agreement? And then once that's all squared away, we can vote on it on the final agreement at a future meeting.
Would there be any way to find out what the expenses are at the moment? Before we, you know, I would hate to go through a, somebody writing an agreement up if it's, if we don't know what the expenses are first, you know?
I'm sure it's quite minimal, but we can definitely get that to you. Dan, Dan Meyer, have a comment?
Yeah, so I think, um, I believe the last time I looked, the electric bill is somewhere in the neighborhood of 500 a year. Assuming the heat is kept at like the bare, bare minimum. So obviously, if, you know, if they turn the heat up for something, that would add the cost, but I think that's about it. And then I can also tell you it's basically empty. The weights and measures are in there. And I think at some point, the historic commission and society will find a new home for them, but they don't want to spend the money to move them till, because it's going to be expensive till there's a final solution. But they're just kind of stuck in a corner. Other than that, it's just Christmas lights.
So what kind of, what kind of heat is in there, Dan?
It's some sort of an electric heat pump system.
Okay.
And I think now that we addressed, there was something wrong with it before that's been fixed when the society was there. But I believe it's pretty cheap.
All right, so why don't we get the, the exact numbers from Laura and we can get those to you, Bruce, okay?
All right, and then just, well, we can figure that out after, because we could either write a check to the town or we could have the electric bill put into the brother's name if we decide to go forward, whatever is easiest for you guys.
Okay. Very good.
All right, and Tom, I don't know if you've got any questions? Mr. Fickner?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me? Okay.
We can hear you, yeah.
Hey, no, I think it's really just a matter of confirming the cost. As Bruce said, presenting you to the membership verification that they're on board with that. We know what the state of the building is right now and currently what's, what's in there. So I think it would meet the needs. I know there was standard mention, I think previously, that might be some consideration for us wanting to put some sort of protection maybe down on the floor as a basis. Is, did I have that right, Dan?
I, yeah, I think, I mean, I think if we were going to put anything heavy in there, we should just toss some cardboard to protect the old floors. But, you know, I, it's pretty much.
Yeah, I was just thinking totes more than anything else. That would be storing the lights and, you know, maybe we, I think we, the sweatshirts and stuff like that from the 350th, I think, are still up at the church, the old church rectory. So it'd be nice to put all that stuff in one place, that's all.
And the only other thing I would probably ask about might be access. If this was something that were to come to fruition, if the brothers were able to utilize it. Would there be certain guidelines with regard to who would have access for that building moving forward?
I think those are details that can be worked out with, with Kim and Cindy. Make sure that, you know, that's a controlled situation, especially if we're going to authorize you to use that and store your valuable equipment.
Yep, okay, great. That's all I had from my end. Thank you all.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is Alan Tatro on?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I didn't know if you could hear me if I did this right or not. But, um, yeah, I just, I'm asking the board to allow me to deficit spend in the snow and ice account. Currently, right now, we are in the red and hide equipment. We have about 15,000 in equipment maintenance left. We do have some money in someone in the salt and calcium account. But we, we get a Radalodge bill that I'm going to be processing today. I'm believing that account is going to have somewhere around 25,000 left into it. And the shed is pretty empty, so I will be ordering more salt for that. And with the upcoming snow event coming later on this week, I'm just trying to plan ahead a little bit here.
Has the Finance Committee discussed this yet or is that just?
I believe that they're going to discuss this on Wednesday evening.
Tomorrow night.
Oh, tomorrow night, yeah. So, um, yeah, that's, that's, that's what's going on there.
All right. So, Kim, do we, the motion would be pending Finance Committee approval as well, right?
Right. You both have to approve it.
I move to allow the Highway Department to deficit spend. Was there a limit on a hundred thousand, was it?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what we did last year.
Yeah, pending FinCom approval.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Tenio, I.
Real eye. Thank you, Alan.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, consider appointment of Jason Bangma on call Deputy Fire Chief.
Hi, Mr. Chair, Bill Cutler, Fire Chief here. As part of what I'll call the ongoing redevelopment of the Fire Department, I'm pleased to bring forward Lieutenant Jason Bangma for consideration for appointment to the position of on-call Deputy Fire Chief. I've known Jason for 20 years or so from when he did his high school internship with Duxbridge Fire. He is a career firefighter in a neighboring apartment and an officer there. He's been with us in Mendon for two years. He is a resident of Mendon. His resume is very extensive with many certifications and up to including a credential as fire off, as fire chief. So I recommend that the board appoint Jason as the on-call deputy chief for us.
Excellent. I'll take a motion.
I move to appoint Jason Magma to on-call deputy fire chief at a rate of $19 per hour and an annual stipend of 3,000.
Need further discussion? Hey, all in favor?
Tenio, I.
Real eye. Okay, very good. Thank you so much, Chief.
Welcome.
Oh, we do have more for you though, I guess, right?
Yes, there's one more.
Okay, we have Christopher Nud.
Yes, so a firefighter department, Matt, Christopher Nud joined us as a career person the end of last May. He came to what, he's got prior experience of six years with the Sherburne Fire Department and rose to the rank of Lieutenant at that department. He's done very well in the time he's been with us, very helpful around the station. We did a lieutenant's test, by the way, just to back up, we did an assessment on the deputy chief as well. Three surrounding town chiefs did an interview, an assessment of, of Jason Bang for the deputy chief position. We had a written test for the lieutenant position and also the same three chiefs did an interview and assessment of Chris Nud for the lieutenant position. And for both of them, the chiefs were very positive on the results of that and, and said they would work out fine. So Chris has six years of experience, a year with us, has done wonderful and I'm pleased to recommend him for appointment to the position of lieutenant.
Excellent. I'll accept the motion.
I move to appoint Christopher Nud to Fire Department Lieutenant at a rate of $30.15 per hour and an annual stipend of 1,000.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Tenio, I.
Okay.
Real eye. Very good. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Okay, consider appointment of Nicholas Sletnick, full-time dispatcher. Is Chief Curtis going to speak to this?
Yeah, okay. I can speak quick. So obviously, we're going to be switching over to regional dispatch with the MECC. That's in Norfolk, but in the meantime, we still got to maintain our dispatch. Normally it took four full-time dispatches to run it. In the past six months, I've been running with three. One of the three has left to go work for another department locally as they don't really want to go over to the MECC. So I have that one open position, can't run dispatch 24/7 right now with two people. So we just need to fill one more person back in and the person should be here till the end when we switch. It's a, he's a midway dispatcher, comes over with a lot of experience and he's looking to send himself to the academy soon over the summer or the fall. So it, the timing works with us.
Okay, we'll accept the motion.
Move to appoint, sorry, Nicholas Sletnick to full-time dispatcher at a rate of $25.08 per hour.
Second.
All in favor?
Tenio, I.
Okay.
Real eye. Great, thank you. And we have consider MOU side letter for Men and Police Department Staff Sergeant and Corporal. Chief, you want to talk about that?
That's just two positions that we worked on together with the board, that I worked on with the board. We're not adding any new people to the department or anything, their internal positions that will be assigned by the chief administratively to have supervisors on more often and to make sure that we have the proper supervision and people are following policies and staying updated with everything they do in the department.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Sorry, I move to sign the side letter slash MOU for Staff Sergeant and Corporal for the Men and Police Department.
Second.
Further discussion?
Just to confirm, this is, sorry, just to confirm, these didn't, there's no additional funding for these? This is just more, these are just ranked, right?
Correct, there are assignments that have rank with them and the funding has already been in the budget for the past two years for them.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Tenio, I.
Real eye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, consider temporary outdoor dining area, outdoor table service, general on-premise alcohol, entertainment, common vitrular license approvals for GV Mendon Management, Grandview. Is there anyone?
Pat Gillen is here from Grandview. I can see him on my screen anyhow.
Sorry, I was muted. Kelly's here too. How are you guys?
Oh, okay.
Great.
Yeah, so this is basically just a repeat of last year. We're looking to have a backup option pending government restrictions for outdoor events. So we have a permit into the building department right now for a tent. But we do not have the permits to serve outside in the tent. So that would cover, these are basically the extensions on our, on our existing licenses.
Okay. Just looking at the motion. Okay, is that? Yeah, all right, I'll accept the motion.
I move to extend the prior approval of request of GV Management slash Grandview to change the description of the licensed premises to allow outdoor food and alcohol services beyond November 1, 2020. This extension of the approval shall remain in effect until 60 days after the end of the state of emergency. These changes to the description of licensed premises shall automatically revert back to the definition and effect prior to the change in expansion of outdoor table services 60 days after the end of the state of emergency and pending approval of Board of Health, Fire, Police.
Second. Discussion. My only concern is that, I mean, the state of emergency could go on for years and years before that ends. I mean, there's seen that in the past, like, for example, I believe the state of emergency for when the gas explosions happened is still actually in effect for that situation. So what is the reasoning behind tying it to the state of emergency? As opposed to giving, doing like a year-to-year type of reevaluation?
Cindy has her hand up.
Cindy?
She's on mute.
She muted?
Muted, Cindy.
You can do it till 60 days after the date of emergency or you can do it until an earlier date if you so choose. So if you are uncomfortable with an open-ended timeframe, you can put a shorter date in. And then if they want to come back and the ability to still have outside dining under the executive order is there, they can apply again. So you do have that flexibility.
My opinion would leave, be to leave it open-ended only because we're going to continue to keep coming back to these. I don't see any reason why we need to reiterate if it's allowed by whatever the governor's crazy orders are that then we should be able to, they should be able to do whatever they need to do to keep business running as best possible, as best, as best as possible with the least amount of red tape that they would need to do. There's enough red tape going on right now, so that's my opinion.
I'm good with this.
Mark, there's also an entertainment license as well. It's a second motion because it has to be a separate item, according to Cindy.
Um, was there a second on this or did we even make?
I did make, uh, did make a second.
Yeah, he did.
Sorry. Okay, all in favor?
Tenio, I.
Okay.
Real eye. Okay, consider entertainment license for GV Mendon Management.
I move to approve an entertainment license for the use in conjunction with the approval of the extension of premises for GV Management, Grandview.
Second. Need further discussion? All in favor?
Okay.
Tenio, I.
Real eye. Okay, I'll set with that. Consider seasonal common vitrular license renewal Georgia Surf and Turf.
Sorry, I move to approve the renewal of a common vitrual license for Georgia's Surf and Turf, George and La Francois, 116 Oxford Road, pending receipt of positive routing slips.
Second. All in favor?
Tenio, I.
Okay.
Real eye. So that. Update town-owned property. So I believe Kim will speak to that.
So I've invited Keller Williams, Jack Hunter is here, they are the, in Duncan, I think Duncan's not here. But they're the pair that we've been working with in order to facilitate the valuation of multiple properties and to do the RFI in order to get some interest in some of the pieces. And so I wanted to have them come in and sort of give you a quick update about where we are status-wise and what's happening with those projects.
Perfect. Can't see them, so go right ahead and speak up.
Hi there, Jack Hunter here. Duncan is not here, right?
Don't think so.
No. I've been in the planning business for about 37 years. I had the pleasure of retiring in August. And I've known Duncan Chapman, who works for Keller Williams for quite a while. He asked me to, if I'd be interested in helping out on this property, and I'm talking about 3 North Ave. I can't really speak to the other two properties. Duncan is handling them. I know them a little bit. So if you have questions for them, we might have to wait. I just wanted to update you where we're going with this. Obviously, I had to get myself accustomed to the property and to Mendon. I've met with Kim a couple of times virtually. I've met with Bill from the Planning Board once and we walked the property. And I've also met with the Planning Board twice now. Tomorrow, a meeting with a joint meeting of the Economic Development Committee and the Land Use Committee to kind of do exactly what I'm doing today. And my whole goal is to get as much input and insight on what's possible on this property. I'm not going to tell you anything you don't know. You know it's not served by water and sewer. You know there's, it's about 21 acres. The lower half is in the priority habitat area, which does not preclude development. But it's another hurdle that a developer would have to have, take rather. And most, most concerning is that it's own residential. So after speaking with Kim and Bill and now the Planning Board, they asked if we would consider, or if they would consider changing the zoning to allow for a mixed-use development, an over 55 housing plus commercial retail office development. So that would take zone change. We're gearing toward your May Town Meeting, which means we are fast-tracking this. I've been, I'm almost done actually with a real rough draft. But I wanted to get input from as many boards and individuals, town officials as possible to make sure we're going in the right track. Most importantly, I think we need to get a sense from the development community of what's possible. We can think over 55 and mixed use is a great idea. Hopefully it is, but if the development community thinks it's not feasible, then we might have to change the direction. Because why go out, why change the zoning, go out to bid and nobody bids on it? So we did a request for information that's hit the street. We've sent it out to the whole channel of developers that Keller Williams has. The Planning Board gave me some developers. I knew some. We sent that out. Tomorrow at 11:00, we are having kind of a Q and A with developers to, to get them to know Mendon a little bit, what's possible, what we're trying to do. And hopefully get their questions answered and if not, we'll do that in writing as we move along. Then, I believe it's March 5th, we are asking for preliminary plans and proposals from the development community. And they can show you what they think is possible on this site under new zoning, but the current obviously property and the lack of utilities. Then we will finalize the bylaw. We will certainly pass it by Town Council. And I've already passed it on to a couple of people that Bill from the Planning Board asked me to have, take a look at it. And have a public hearing and go to Town Meeting. If all this moves the way we hope it does and Town Meeting approves it, we will go out for a request for proposals in probably May. And maybe by July, you will have a proposal, or hopefully more than one, of a developer who's doing something that you think is the highest and best use for the property. And you can get paid for the property and also get some taxes. And then, you know, we'll go through the negotiation of sales and stuff like that. So that's, that's the path we're taking. So far, so good. I have four people that have RSVP'd for tomorrow. But according to Duncan, and he, he knows a lot more of the development community than I do. He thinks we're going to get a bunch of people tagging on who haven't RSVP'd. So I'm really. So I'm really curious about what happens tomorrow. So you'll be seeing me a little here and there as we go through these benchmarks, but we, I think we got a plan to get it there in May and keep our fingers crossed.
That's great. We've, as a board, we've prioritized this issue as the need to better develop our business districts. And so it's really great to hear that you're making progress this way and look forward to hearing things as they develop.
I'll add one other thing, and I just did on a napkin some calculations because you don't have water and sewer. I don't know what kind of density people are thinking of. Bill and the Planning Board hasn't really expressed much. But you're really going to be limited to between 85 and 100 bedrooms for the entire site, and that will be less bedrooms as the commercial gets bigger. So it's one or the other. So I don't know if you're thinking mega bucks here, but, you know, the utilities are going to constrain you. It's all going to be based on engineering, really. But hopefully it's something that will be compatible and we really, and in the bylaw I created, I want it to be compatible to downtown Mendon and something that's attractive. And you have the final say. So, you know, you're in an advantageous position because you'll get the proposals before they even go through zoning. And if you don't like them, you can modify them to where you do like them. So it's a good place to be and the market is good right now, so.
Okay. Chris or Lonnie, do you have any comments?
Not at this time, Mike.
I don't, I don't, other than, yeah, I'm happy to see this moving along again. Thanks.
You got it.
Kim, you good?
Great. I just want to say it's already been a real pleasure working with Jack on this. It's, this is exactly what we've been hoping for, so I'm excited.
Thank you, Jack. Kim, review FY '22 budget.
Okay, earlier today, I sent you a summary. I can try to pull it up and share my screen just to do the highlights. First, I'll tell you where we are calendar-wise. So because our meeting was delayed, this is the first draft review of the budget by the board. The FinCom did see a version a week ago, again, very early in draft state, you know, we have another month and a half or so to go. The good news as of right now is that our budget is balanced, which is excellent and ahead of schedule for us. The bad news is that we, of course, have a couple of unknowns out there and we're going to have to tackle those like we do as we get closer. So let me see, unless Lonnie, you want to share yours. See how I can finagle this and get it done. I want to make sure I don't have anything else open that I need. Okay. All right. Here we go. Just very quickly, I'm going to try to share this. This. Can you see it?
Yep.
Great. So just really quickly, this is the budget as of this morning. So we are up, you can see, our budget is up operationally about $443,000, which is about 5.5%, and I'll give you the detail on what's in that on the next slide. Right now, we're up about $300,000 for the schools. That's with me plugging in 315, which is the 50-50 number for Merzda and a reduction of about $15,000 that we got from BVT from Dr. Fitz. We're up a little bit in debt exclusion for that new police station payment coming online. That's on the expenditure side. On the revenue side, we have seen slight growth for new growth and in local receipts. But we're slightly down in state aid. So there's nothing significant on either of these. Just for comparison, last year, our operational budget went up about 5.1%, so we're right on par with last year. So what's in the budget? What's in that 443? So of that 443,000, you can see 393,000 of it is actually budget drivers, again, which are the things that we have very little control over. There's an increase in retirement. For most kind of time, I have 111. Insurance is up 17.3, Medicare 10. This year, you know, we are negotiating with all five of our unions, and so we have placed the reserve for that and reserve for salary negotiations. And right now, I have $40,000 there for that. We have the new payment coming online for the fire engine. Bill has got some changes in there regarding overtime for current staffing patterns. The trash contract is going up and we have some IT contracts that are going up. And then, of course, we have the payment increase for debt service. So that's all told is about $393,000. Okay, that's what's there. Which leaves us very quickly with, we had about $200,000 worth of requests from departments, of which I'm recommending funding of about $45,000 because that's what we have left after that. Bill has a request for a seventh full-time fire person. I put 20,000 in road materials since we've been working towards that goal of improving roads. Every time we have a balancer, which is a little bit of money left over, I throw it in FinCom Reserve. So that number is changing as there's, you know, a couple thousand dollars left over. I'm putting it there. The town clerk has asked for an increase in her salary. I am recommending that we give her an increase. It's not the amount that she's asking for, but I think it's a reasonable middle-of-the-range amount, and that's my request here. And then my big request this year was going to be the creation and beginning of a capital depreciation account for the Highway Department, which would be an annual funding from the operating budget of about $100,000 per year for a 10-year cycle for replacement for the value of about a million and change. And obviously, because of our current state of the budget, we cannot fund that, but that is something that we need to be working towards. And so I've left it on this list as a reminder. I will also, as one other reminder, say the only reason you do not see your regular requests on here this year, which would be children's librarian, full-time senior center, is because I asked all of the departments early on, and we made it pretty clear that this is not the year to be asking for anything that's outside of really operational needs. And so all of the departments have an area understanding and they get it. And so this is as straightforward as a budget as you're going to get considering the current fiscal environment. And I appreciate them all taking the time and taking this very seriously this year and knowing what, where we're at. And then, so down here, the only outstanding issue left, like I said, as far as I know, we have 315, which is the 50-50 for Merzda, but the actual crest might be higher. Let me share another document with you. Hold on. I'm just going to hit the highlights of the budget very quickly. Because there are a couple that you don't really see without me pointing them out. All of this is basically the same. It's everything I've talked about. I am rearranging the Finance Department. This was previously the Treasurer Collector's Office. I'm renaming it the Finance Department. And I'm putting accounting within that same budget. That's part of the overall plan that we've been working towards. The other changes would be, I just want to highlight Dispatch. Currently, we are funding this half a year worth of dispatch in here because we are not sure on the final date yet of when we will actually move. And so all of the towns that are within the MECC are all funding it six months just in case. We hope to know a little bit clearer by March, so there might be half of this available potentially that we could use, but probably not before we certify a budget in March. Just putting that forward. Like I said, I've increased 20,000 for road materials, but here's where the 105 would be for capital depreciation if somehow we found $105,000. That's where it would go. I just also want to point out, everybody else's budgets are pretty flat. We've got some changes in this. These are our actual numbers for Worcester County Retirement. They're, it's a killer. I mean, it's a 16% increase, which is a killer. But it is what it is. I would like to highlight down here, though, in health insurance, which is not something that you're really going to see, which is we have a reduction this year in health insurance because we negotiated a two-year agreement with Maya last year when we renegotiated our terms and we got a locked-in rate. So we actually in addition to, you know, seeing the savings that we're going to have from Dispatch, we also had, you know, 2% or 2 and change renewal. And so I mean, I don't know that we'll ever see this again, but I'm excited to share that part of the reason that we even have $45,000 to spend is because we're able to reduce some of our costs here and things that normally we would have to pay increases in. Other than that, everything is as it always is. And so that's the update on the budget. I don't know if you have any specific questions, but that is where we are as of right now. The the status with the FinCom is they are starting to meet with the individual departments to go through a little bit more detail. But like I said, there's really not much change in here that is going to overly complicate this budget here. And that is that. There you go.
So the school line is just the 50-50 number?
The 315 for 50-50. That's currently what's budgeted.
There's been no, nothing formally different in school yet.
I received a Dr. Fitzpatrick's numbers the other day. I think, I believe you received on that.
Yeah. Okay. I don't have any questions. Chris?
Can you just forward the Dr. Fitz numbers to me?
Yeah, me too.
Well, it came in the afternoon's update, but I'll forward it now.
Mr. Chair, before you move on, could I just jump in real quick?
Of course.
Bill, the Fire Chief. In that, there was that $84,000 figure for a change in salaries, I believe, and Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, that 56,000 of that is part of the Dispatch process and covering the police station there. So I don't want you to think that all $84,000 was going into overtime.
That's fair. He, we put the new, the new police fire admin in his fire budget. So that is part of the reason why the increase looks substantial.
Right. And then some of the other, the rest of the parts of those increases were some contractual issues. There are we, with our two hires that we made last year, naturally, they have to go through the steps. They're both getting those step increases this year, so I do have to account for them in next year's budget. And it did reflect, and I sent you some information about trying to fill the hours that that seventh career person would have. The cost just kind of drift up. It's, it's hard to get that position or those hours all covered. So I had to, I should say, it's hard to get them covered at an EMT basic level, which is a cheaper rate. Sometimes we have to put paramedics in there, per diem paramedics or the career people on overtime. So that's what accounted for that $84,000 increase in that. As I mentioned in the, in the email that I sent each of you individually, that I believe I can somewhat comfortably put that seventh person in within the figures that Kim has under the recommended column. And it would mean adjusting my operating expenses and moving that budgetary purposes over into the, to the benefits of the health insurance line. So I guess I'd be looking for the board's opinion on, on adding that seventh position, if it can be done within Kim's budget, so that we can make those budgetary changes early enough for Town Meeting.
Well, I'm always in favor of adding services within your budget, so if you can do it within budget, go for it.
My only request was if he can wait until Dispatch is actually finalized, on the hiring, I'd feel a lot more comfortable with the whole thing. So if that's six months or three months, that would make me a lot happier.
Yeah, and I certainly wouldn't mind waiting on the hiring. My concern is because we have to have the budget set for Town Meeting and line items and, and that money in the correct place. Do you think it'd be appropriate to do those corrections now as part of the budget and hold off on the hiring and and make sure that that does happen?
That's fine with me as long as it works for Kim.
See, Bill?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if I'm comfortable with that. It's first passed to the budget. Haven't had really a great opportunity to review the budget, see where the shortfalls, et cetera. So I think it's a little premature, in my opinion.
Okay, can we, can we raise this at the next meeting?
Be an opportunity to sit down and review the budget with Ken.
That's fine. I think that's acceptable because there's still time to make some changes. Okay, anything else, bud? All right, consider date of annual Town Meeting. Should we? Well, let's make the motion.
So since Lonnie's looking down and not paying attention, I'll make the motion. I move to schedule the annual Town Meeting for Saturday, May 8, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. with the rain date of Saturday, May 15, 2021, at 10:00 a.m.
Can you second it for me, too?
If you need me to.
Okay, made and seconded. And do you want to just start this conversation?
So basically, both the moderator and the town clerk and the board and everyone for the last year basically decided that Saturday during the day is a better time to try to have this meeting and then to have a rain date the following Saturday because Sunday, the 9th, is Mother's Day. That's the entirety of the conversation. We should get a tent, which will have a cost associated with it, but I think that should be the plan.
So can I ask a question on a tent? So can we try to negotiate that tent that, you know, pending we need it?
Sure, yes.
I mean, you're talking, you know, you're talking what, four to six grand for a tent to stick all these people under?
To rent a tent?
Yeah, I think it's, I think to rent a big tent to have a town. I mean, unless you're just getting a small tent. But I know that when the tents that we've rented for parties in the past were, you know, four to $6,000 for 250.
Yes, that sounds fine. We can wait. I'll put a deposit down on one and then we'll wait and see how the weather is and then.
We should probably just buy a tent.
I said this to Amy, I think we should be buying one anyway for future use at the Senior Center for outdoor things, but I think there's liability issues with us putting up the tent ourselves. So that we'd have to take a look at. So just, yes, we can price out the tent.
I'm always saying that we just, if we don't need it, is all I'm saying. So we're, we're doing this because of, hold on, one second, Jay. We're doing this because of COVID. Do we expect more people than we had, that we fit in the gym last time? Assuming because it was a potential override issue. So, I mean. All right, Jay, go ahead.
My only comment is if you're going to do a tent, you only have to do it on the 15th, not the 8th, because you have a rain date of the 15th. So therefore, the 8th, if it turns out it's fine, you don't need a tent. You could also just tell people to bring umbrellas. I think it's different if you're outside in a torrential downstorm, you know, downpouring at night, which was our issue last year, as opposed to rain at 10 o'clock on a Saturday morning where it's light and you don't have to worry about people seeing. So I don't know if a tent's a necessity, but the idea is to have it outside. We were way too crowded in the gym last year on June 29th. I mean, we had 285 people at that meeting. We had people in the auditorium that couldn't really hear or participate. We can't do that again. That's the reason. I think we just go outside on the football field and do the best we can. But you don't need it for the 8th because if it's nice, you don't, you have the meeting, and if it isn't, you move it to the 15th.
Got it. All right. I'm good with this.
Tom has his hand up, too. Tom?
Tom Pickner.
Hello, all. Just wondering, would you entertain the possibility of donations with regard to tent usage? Has that been looked at, out of curiosity?
You know, I don't, I'm not sure that anyone's sought donations, but if there's a group out there that's interested in donating a tent, then I'm sure the town would be so willing to take you up on that.
Okay.
But the good thing is, I mean, like Jay said, if we can do the meeting on the 8th without a tent, then we don't need to worry about a tent. without a ten, then we don't need to worry about a ten for fifteen.
Mark, the other thing.
That's all.
If you wanted me to.
Chair.
Mark.
Yes.
Other thing, though, is you're, you're never going to be able to get a tent big enough for three hundred people to fit under. It's going to cover the whole football field. It's going to cost you a lot more than four or five thousand dollars. I mean, we looked at tents to rent for the school to do outdoor classrooms and we were looking at like sixty foot by a hundred foot tents. You need building permits. It was a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars to get what we were looking for.
We're not doing that.
We're not doing that, correct. I would agree with you a hundred percent.
Even override just to pass that.
Right. You know, umbrellas are a lot cheaper.
Yeah.
Have everybody bring up their pop up tent.
There you go.
We'll make one big one.
We can have a big cookout after, too.
Okay, what's next?
You're just going to vote on that?
Tenio, I.
Perk eye.
Real eye. Okay, open town meeting warrant.
I move to open up the annual town meeting warrant.
Second, sorry, I don't have it on my list for some reason. Second.
All in favor?
Tenio, I.
Perk eye.
Real eye. Okay. It's open. Appoint Ann Dudley, local historic district commission.
I move to appoint Ann Dudley to the local historic district commission.
Second. With the term to expire.
Oh, sorry. Term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty one.
It's an alternate member.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Tenio, I.
Real eye. Okay, appointment of Russell Dudley, local historic district commission.
I move to appoint Russell Dudley to local historic district commission as an alternate member for a term to expire June thirty, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Tenio, I.
Perk eye.
Real eye. Okay, excellent. Thank you. Meeting minutes.
Everybody okay with them for me to make the motion?
Yeah, it was fun.
I move to approve the meeting minutes of ten twenty, twenty, eleven twenty twenty, eleven twenty three twenty and twelve fifteen twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Tenio, I.
Perk eye.
Real eye. Okay. Covered other topics. Okay, I move to enter into executive session under Mass General Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one, Purpose Two. Conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, finance director position. We'll reconvene only to adjourn. Call vote is needed.
Second.
All in favor? Real eye. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night, Al.
Good night.